Down so.
Officer Elliott, I'm pretty sure, right, Officer Elliott? We we just, we met. He was, he was keeping the roads safe. Good job. He's like, what are you doing looking down that hole, man? Take care of business. It was, it was crossing his mind, I believe.
He rides that bike pretty fast sometimes.
I call this meeting of the only city council May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five to order. Please rise and say the pledge of allegiance remains standing. Reverend Steve Wingick says our opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, we thank you today for this day. We thank you for our community. Thank you for all those who have given their life and service through our country. And continue to serve. And I just pray that you would grant wisdom and guidance tonight in this meeting. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Fairbuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Iceburst.
Here.
Councilman Iyer.
Present.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
First item on the agenda is presentation of the consent agenda, which includes two improvements to the council meeting on May twelfth, two thousand and twenty five. Proven authorized payments of accounts payable May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Resolution to amend the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six tourism budget for the Chamber of Commerce grant. Resolution to accept cook for fighter chief squad vehicle and waive formal bidding procedures. Set proposal for Taylor Lakeside Tribe Storm Sewer and waive formal bidding procedures. And a support for the Swan Grant application. Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Same.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, request for a class S liquor license for Quittle Town Holdings Hobies LLC, Doing Businesses Hobies for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six liquor license year.
I'm just requesting a class S liquor license to, for a temporary liquor permit to do the sales there up there.
Questions or comments? Questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Hope the weather's as good as it was last year.
Mm-hmm. See you. See you.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to honor the life and legacy of William Bill Jennings and dedicate an honorary street in his memory in your packet. There is a very small section right directly behind the grandstands that is unnamed, would not change any addresses, would leave us plenty of other places to do the same for other folks in the future should we so wish. And Mr. Jennings, of course, was a huge part of making oratorical the success it is for all those years, and I think it's a good honor for him. Any questions, comments? All those in, uh, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second, or, Chris.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of MFT concrete bid for use in miscellaneous construction work. Mr. Richards.
We opened the bids this morning for the MFT work, and one of those was the ready mixed concrete we paid out of MFT. There were two bidders, Dolls Incorporated and Schreih Systems. Dolls had a bid of one hundred and sixty four dollars per yard, total of thirty two thousand eight hundred dollars. Schreih Systems bid one hundred and fifty dollars per yard, total of thirty thousand dollars. So, uh, that bid was under the estimate, so I would recommend awarding that work to Schreih Systems.
We've had no complaints or no issues with Schreih, because?
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item?
Also open the bids for the oil and chip work. Uh, that included the tunis materials, furnishing the CA sixteen crush stone and applying the CA sixteen crush stone. For the furnishing of the CA sixteen crush stone, there were two bidders, Three Sisters Logistics and Charles Carter and Son. Three Sisters bid thirty one dollars per ton, total of sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Charles Carter bid twenty six dollars and ninety five cents a ton, fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty three dollars. That also was under the estimate, so I would recommend you award the furnishing of the CA sixteen crush stone to Charles Carter and Son.
Questions, comments?
And we, had, you dealt with them before?
Yeah, they, they've pretty much been furnishing for the past two or three years, maybe longer than that.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item?
There was one bidder for the HFP and the applying of the cover code aggregate. That was Mount Carmel Stabilization Group. They bid three dollars and forty eight cents per gallon, for a total of forty four thousand eight hundred eighty one dollars and fifty six cents. And for the applying crush stone, nineteen dollars and ninety five cents, total of ten thousand seven hundred and seventy three dollars, for a total of fifty five thousand six fifty four fifty six. So I would recommend you award those two prices to Mount Carmel Stabilization.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
That seems, that seems in line, doesn't it, Mike?
What's that?
That seems in line, doesn't it? Three forty six a gallon?
Yeah, that's about, uh, it's, it's three cents, three cents a gallon more than it was last year.
Still, pretty good, pretty good.
Pretty, pretty reasoning, yeah.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, want me to go on to the next item?
Sure.
Uh, last meeting, we talked about the, noticed a funding opportunity for IDOT. So since then, and, and the council wanted to go with Walnut Street, from Butler to Mac. So I did some estimates on that. Basically, it's broken down into three, three sections. Butler to Scott, Scott to Hardman, Hardman to Mac. The first estimate I came up with would be to replace the pavement from Butler to Scott, keeping most of the curb and gutter. Or replacing what needed to be placed, uh, new ADA ramps at all the intersections. There would be some new storm sewer, um, right around where Thomas.
That way.
Used to be. Uh, but other than that, be, just replace the pavement. Between Scott and Hardman, then, that pavement, we're gonna take it out. It's in pretty, pretty rough shape. Redo it, put a new base down, widen it, so it would be the same width as going on north. Uh, about twenty four, twenty five foot wide. And then from Hardman to Mac, the concrete there is in, it would take some patches in some places, but it's not, not too bad. And we would do what we did like on Hall Street, add curb and gutter to what's there, widen it, three inches, the curb and gutter will be three inches higher, and overlay what's, what's there. So, and there'll be new storm sewer, obviously along with that. To do that, estimate is right around four million dollars. Now, if you wanted to take out the curb and gutter, and just widen the area between Scott and Hardman, and resurface the, Hardman to Mac, that would decrease the total by about a million dollars. So we're talking four million dollars to redo it, about three million dollars to not have the curb and gutter, basically. So, a- and the other thing is, there is an old six inch caster and water line under the pavement from Butler to Scott, which should probably be relocated. This program does have in there, utility relocations can be included. Now, the question is, a lot of times when they're talking about utility relocations, they're talking about power poles that are actually in the way. Fiber optic manholes are in the way. This project could technically be done without moving that water line, so I don't know how they would view that.
Out, that's probably fairly old, isn't it?
It, yeah, there, there's several repairs. There've been several repairs on that line.
So we need to.
The, the problem is, there's not a whole lot of room to move it. It had to be under the sidewalk, basically. And, and the estimate to move that water line is right at six hundred and fifty thousand. So I, I guess my, uh, question to the council is, what, what do you want us to submit the application for?
If you do widen only, it's the three million total.
Right. And that would just be, that would just be the widening between Scott and Hardman.
Okay.
I, I travel that all the time, but where is Hardman?
It's the to, it's basically top of the hill.
Okay.
I don't know if you knew where Tolliver's lived? On the, on the, we, east side of the street right there, that intersection?
And if we're just, this is just an application for the grant, so.
Right.
Why not load it up as much as we can?
What you're in, okay, let's just, let's just say we're looking for argument's sake at the four million dollar one, all the way. You have an estimate on, okay, we're gonna get a grant for this, and the storm sewer's gonna cost this, we've gotta eat that.
No, the storm sewer's in, all included.
I thought we had to pay for ea, one or the other, right?
No, not, no, this, this is all, this, this program is, is a hundred percent grant. There's no match, there's no nothing on this.
Okay. I didn't, uh, okay, I was confused. I was thinking in the last meeting.
No, there's, there's no match on this, and, uh, if it's got to do with the project, and it's transportation related, it, it can be included.
Okay, then I concur with.
Ditto.
Councilman.
I'm for the full modsy, and, uh, let's maybe do it right, if, if we, as we can.
See what happens.
Okay. You want to include the utility relocation? Sure, 'cause that would put like four point six.
So is that gonna hurt us if we do that?
Hard to say. The, the actual instructions say they're with the ten million dollars on the project.
Oh, so we'd still be well under.
So, now, they, they are probably trying to spread it out over the state, you know?
No doubt.
So, uh, i- in the, in the handout there that said they have average project of two million dollars, you know, there's gonna be some projects, especially transit.
Twenty five.
That are gonna be close to ten million dollars, probably. So, uh, but it would be within the range. Application.
How, what, what would the, what would the rough timeline be for this? How long would we have before this actually starts happening, before we'd have to relocate that water line?
They want, now, they had a, they had a, like a webinar on this last week, and it sounded like they wanted the grant agreement or something started within two years.
Jane, what do you think in terms of what the Water Department, Water Distribution brings in? Should we include it in the grant, or should we just build it up and do it out of there?
Well, we have some, I mean, we're gonna do the.
We have some other things to do.
Yeah. We're gonna do the fourth street one, and Alan's been talking about the, um, Whittle Avenue. There's a section down there that needs replaced.
How much is that gonna be like?
The Whittle Ave, I've not looked at that, but Whittle Avenue, water line on Whittle Avenue is really bad.
And Brandon's wanting to repaint a water tower next year.
So you're saying we should probably include it?
Include it in the grant.
Guess I'll try it.
Yeah.
All they can do, so you answer no.
It, it, it's hard to say. They may say, well, we're gonna give you this much. They, this is also new, that there was, in that webinar, there was hundreds of questions. And some, some of them, they, they couldn't answer, and they basically said, apply for it, if you get it.
Work it out.
Then, then, yeah, that's basically it.
Yeah.
So if, uh, we give them the loaded up version, and they say, I'm gonna give you a million less than what your estimate was, are we able to whittle down some of the things to bring it closer to what the money is they actually gave us?
Again, it's hard to say. IDOT, um, you may not be able to. They may wanna say, they may want you to, well, this is a project you wanted to do. Want you to do it. But they may say, we can't give you enough, maybe we'll let you, let you cut it back.
You could also decline it.
You could decline it. You could decline it. Uh, the, the problem with that is.
Next.
Your change of getting one in the future will probably be diminished.
And you have to have this grant in by June.
Well, technically, it's gotta be in by Friday.
By Friday.
June, June first, but it's, it's gotta come from a, a computer here at City Hall, so that'll, basically.
You okay with that timeline for this week?
Yeah. I think, gonna come in and we'll get it. The application is not that, not that difficult to do at, at this point.
I think it's an opportunity we can't pass.
I agree.
So, water line replacement is considered a pre-construction activity and wouldn't be covered by the grant?
It, they say utility relocations are covered.
Oh, okay.
Are covered.
All right, okay, 'cause I wa, I read back through last week's minutes, 'cause I.
No, it, it, re, util, it, it has in there, u- utility relocations can be included.
I think at the last meeting, we didn't know for sure yet what it would cover. We didn't know if it would cover engineering, the engineering costs can also be put in there and everything.
Full package.
Everything.
First applications, very easy and very short, correct?
And if you make the first cut, then of course they're gonna want more, more, more details.
Right.
Drawings, that kind of thing, question of detail, yeah.
All right.
Do you know when the cut, I mean, when they will be making that first decision or anything?
There are gonna be a lot of applications, and I would say it'll be, uh, uh, it'll take a while to go through.
Sure.
Questions, comments? We're good consensus to include the water line?
And the curb and gutter and the storm sewer.
And.
I think we have to.
The whole bit, yeah.
All right, sounds like a plan, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Resolution to approve, next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve the downtown facade grant application and program. We have talked about this, and I think for, for we, for you folks, we talked about it in. It's been a while back. So we attached, you have seen, and I, we have handed this out before, the City of Only facade grant program talks about what's in it, and then has a brief application. That program, we have said would be funded out of money that comes from Lobz Gaming. So now then, if they're up and going, and I think they will generate within twenty thousand dollars a year, the way it looks, the way they're going so far, so, anybody has any questions or comments for that? We've talked about this for numerous years.
I'm excited for it.
Well, and it's up to five thousand dollars, and only thing it does is kind of is a, is a investment, uh, multquire for those folks that might wanna do something downtown, and make our downtown look nicer. And encourage them to.
We have to have that gambling money, and we might as well benefit the downtown.
There we go.
There you go.
Guys, it's frozen, uh, versus what's downtown? Uh, we've taken control of it. I was going to get a hurrah map today, so that is something that we need to determine what that downtown looks like. Is that from, on Main, from Kitchell to Boone? Is that on Quittle, down to, down to North Avenue, or down to the railroad tracks? Or how do we want to, that's something that we need to determine where that exact area is. How far, what is downtown? I mean, I think reasonably from Kitchell to Boone, and from Quittle to, on Quittle, from Main to the railroad tracks is roughly the old downtown.
Yep, shoot factory, yeah.
I would make it ta, maybe take it to Morgan.
Okay.
That would include Hobies.
And, yeah, Chili Willie's, also.
But this is, is basically in there.
Kitchell to Morgan.
I think you, to, to Morgan would be also appropriate. Cutting out Prairie Farms, we're cutting them out.
And it's just those streets, so if they live a block off of one of those streets, then.
Well, I mean, I think this is primarily to kind of boost downtown, you know, give people a chance to.
People driving through.
Whether we get a new shop or something that wants to put up a sign, or new windows and doors and sods.
How, uh, is there a total amount, or how many years we're planning on?
I think until we decide not to do it anymore. I mean, so it's just, I mean, up to twenty thousand dollars a year that would come from that source, 'cause it's more or less a new source.
It just matches as long as we feel like matching.
I mean, at any time, we could decide to, to do it in.
Do we need to put on the application that once we're out of money, it's?
I think, doesn't it say that in there? Oh, this says the city will budget twenty thousand a year for this program.
I mean, on the actual app, application.
Well, I think that goes with it. That front page would go with it, and they could read everything.
And basically, if the city isn't funding it, you just don't hand out applications.
Or keep it until the next go around, say we'll have it the next time.
Right. State didn't indicate how long they were going to fund this matching grant?
Oh, no, this is us. This would be us matching.
And the store owner, it's a fifty fifty, they have to, we would provide half of the project.
Twenty five store owner.
I understand that is. Yeah, the biggest thing I see is where.
How do you feel about that Kitchell, on Main from Kitchell to Morgan, and on Quittle from Main down to the tracks?
You know, attorney that puts a bunch of money into this, this, uh, Kitchell.
Well.
Too late. Yeah, we, we're not really.
Market's out too, you part, so I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, it could be others. I mean, we could expand.
Let's see how it goes.
We can always.
Main should be the focus to start, I believe, because of the traffic.
So do you think Kitchell is far enough to the west, and Morgan's far enough to the east?
I would say so.
Unless you went to Silver.
Well, moving beyond.
But.
If we went to.
If you went to Silver, there's.
Down to Camp, I mean, we have the, the, the Mexican restaurant in Prairie Farms, that's about it. I guess there's a detail of an O L F S station.
Going east, you'd just as well stop at Morgan, really.
I think so.
Is there some?
There's.
We have two retail businesses there. They've been steady. Kitchell, Kitchell. Kitchell's cord house, and I guess the Mexican restaurant in, you do have something to do, but I mean, Prairie Farms is not going to utilize it probably.
I'd be happy to go to North Camp.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Really?
And are you fine with Morgan?
Yeah.
North Camp to Morgan, May, on Quittle, from Main to the railroad tracks. Would I, do I hear that as a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda. Is an ordinance to amend section five point two, one, two point oh seven oh, restriction on the number of licenses authorized of the City of Only Municipal Code. We are going from five to four class A license because the fireside is now closed. We are going.
Long time.
From. Six class B to five because the holiday did not turn in their application.
Six.
And they were contacted numerous times, contacted the day of, and they did not turn it in. Questions or comments on that? Or a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is simply for discussion. We have had some smoke shops pop up. I know there's been some questions from various, uh, people in, in city government, uh, from the police in particular. This is something that by state statute, we can license and regulate in the City of Olm, in the city. So I just think it's something that we should probably do some research on, maybe have more taken a gander, what we can do, and come back to this in the future, 'cause we have had them pop up, and I think there have been some issues here and there. Would you agree with that?
They're not good for the community.
Yeah, so, I think there's just been a little bit of issues here and there, so.
How many do we have now?
There's two.
That's plenty.
There's two, but the liquor stores are also selling raw cannabis, and they're lying and saying it's Delta A.
Yeah.
And they're also, the liquor store is selling meth pipes too. You can go through our case and ask for an oil burner, and they'll give you a meth pipe. So we can license these, these particular things, and we just need to see.
That's not considered drug paraphernalia?
Not until they use it, and then smoke shops are calling them incense burners.
Can we define what we believe in an ordinance drug paraphernalia is?
Seems like a good idea. I think that's gets to be a very tricky thing to do.
I don't know, I'm just. Well, it's not drugs paraphernalia until there's drugs in it. Yeah.
And there's a distinction between possession, possessing the item and actually using the item. So when it's used with a drug, then it becomes drug.
Yeah, it'd be possession if it was dirty with a drug.
We, we all know where it's hidden, but it's under the law.
Do we, we have other examples from other communities that we could draw from?
There are some other places. I found some online, and I don't remember where there are yet, but there are other places that have similar licensing in place. We just need to see, 'cause they are popping up quite regularly, and I think probably would, for to have them regulated just a bit.
Yes. Tightly, tightly as we can.
We'll get back to that at a future date, so, that's all I have. Uh, next item, reports from elected and appointed officials. Status report, Mr. Parker.
Uh, we are interviewing for the water plant, physician. And I think Joan has. Jane has some more information for us.
Um, the, the.
But you, you all, that you all do yours after close session or something, so.
Well, is there, what else did you want me to talk about besides the other?
We're gonna talk about phones, we'll look at that after close.
It doesn't matter, I mean, we can do that now too. So our phone bills through, um, Frontier, we have the landline phones, and they keep raising those prices on those, so we have looked into switching over to internet phones and changing from Sparklight Internet to, um, Frontier's internet also. We also checked, checked with that connexus, but, um, Frontier seems to be a better deal. Um, one thing that we do have to do right now, City Hall and the police station are connected, and we share internet with them, but Frontier won't let us do that. So we will have to get another firewall for this building because we can't share firewall anymore, so that'll cost us about two thousand dollars to do that. Um, but overall, I think we should be saving probably at least six to seven hundred dollars a month on our phone bill between the police station and here. And, um, the sewer department and the park department has already moved to Frontier, so we will also look at P W C and mechanics, and maybe the water plant to move also. Fire station's gonna stay on theirs for a while because they have about a three-year contract with Sparklight that will cost them about sixty seven hundred dollars to get out of, so they'll have to wait a little while. So it's just something that we're looking into, gonna try to do.
Okay.
I've got a related utility question. Um, when the electric ad we got, the program ended, what, uh, what did we do for all of our electricity? Did we go right to Ameren?
We're still under an, an agreement for city accounts until January of twenty six.
Anything else there? Anything else on the round? RCDC report? Nothing there. Chamber of Commerce report?
Um, first thing, um, the chamber would like to thank you for the increase that we voted on last, um, meeting. And, uh, of course, we're going to have the, uh, fifth Friday event this Friday downtown. Uh, we have vendors set up, we have music, and it should be a really good time, so please come down and support downtown. Um... Wes and Megan are gonna be the performers. Sounds of Summers will be starting up six, uh, June fifth, the ashes, right down here. Um, Humble and Kind has a new owner. Gratitude and Grace is doing Lemonade Saturdays, where nonprofit groups can open up a lemonade stand in front of Gratitude and Grace. So please support all of them. Um, Thomas Factory Outlet is, is closing down their retail store. I think that's all of that right now. Yes.
Thank you very much. Not beyond your tourism, I don't suspect.
Well, I did reach out to Tourism today, and do you know that the Tourism Magazine is located in twenty different places in Olm, which I did not know, so... And I can run through them all from now, but I'll, I'll, I'll do that privately.
Okay, sounds like a point.
Mm-hmm.
Um, close session. I would accept a motion to enter into closed session to discuss the sale, sale or lease price of real property, acquisition of real property, and appointment, appointment compensation and performance of specific employees. Is there a motion?
So moved.